Good afternoon. I would like to call the December 4, 2018 session of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors back to order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. We have a lot of people here today who have possibly not been to a meeting like this to testify before, so I thought I'd go over a few matters of protocol. We have probably as many people in the chambers sitting outside who wish to speak also. And for those of you in the lobby, I hope you will fill out this speaker sheet. We have people out there that have them, so please fill them out and give them to the clerk staff, who will bring it to me, and you will get your turn to speak. I plan to call several names at a time, so that those of you who are waiting can get ready to get out of your aisle, and so we can get through and hear from everyone. We're first going to have a presentation from County Council, Robin Dravon, then our Chief Financial Officer, Britt Ferguson, and then Sheriff Jones will speak. The Board of Supervisors may or may not discuss those reports, either with the person giving the report, or after that. When it's time for comments by the public, like I mentioned, I'll call the names of those who have filled out a speaker request form and turned it into our Clerk of the Board, and you'll be able to speak -- sorry, I've got electronics in my ear here. You'll be able to speak for a maximum of two minutes, although I have so many requests, we may adjust it to one minute later. So I wanted to ask you to think about what you want to say, try and be clear and succinct and short, which makes it easier for us to remember what your comments are. When you're speaking, we have a timer running, and on these big screens here, there's a flashing light that gives you the amount of time you have left. When you start, it's green, it's like a traffic signal. When it's green, you go. When it's yellow, you're getting close to the end, and when it's red, you've reached the end of your speaking time, and it will flash at you. So just keep that in mind. And I think it'd be a good idea to think about what you want to say now, and I also want to mention that we want to give everyone a chance to speak, that we possibly can, so please respect the time limits, and please be quiet and courteous to other speakers, so that everyone who wants to will have an opportunity to speak. So, Mr. County Executive, did you have any additional comments you wanted to make?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Our first speaker, then, will be our County Council, Robin Dravon.
Would it be more?
Sure, that'd be a good idea.
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the item into the record?
Okay.
Item 41 is "Workshop to Discuss the Board of Supervisors' Authority Regarding the Inspector General's Access to Sheriff's Department Facilities and Records: Best Practices in Law Enforcement Oversight in Other Counties and Provide Direction and/or Approved Changes to the Scope of Services of the Inspector General's Contract."
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the December 4, 2018 session of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors back to order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. We have a lot of people here today who have possibly not been to a meeting like this to testify before, so I thought I'd go over a few matters of protocol. We have probably as many people in the chambers, sitting outside, who wish to speak also. And for those of you in the lobby, I hope you will fill out this speaker sheet. We have people out there that have them, so please fill them out and give them to the clerk staff, who will bring it to me, and you will get your turn to speak. I plan to call several names at a time, so that those of you who are waiting can get ready to get out of your aisle, and so we can get through and hear from everyone. We're first going to have a presentation from County Council, Robin Dravon, then our Chief Financial Officer, Britt Ferguson, and then Sheriff Jones will speak. The Board of Supervisors may or may not discuss those reports, either with the person giving the report, or after that. When it's time for comments by the public, like I mentioned, I'll call the names of those who have filled out a speaker request form and turned it into our Clerk of the Board, and you'll be able to speak -- sorry, I've got electronics in my ear here. You'll be able to speak for a maximum of two minutes, although I have so many requests, we may adjust it to one minute later. So I wanted to ask you to think about what you want to say, try and be clear and succinct and short, which makes it easier for us to remember what your comments are. When you're speaking, we have a timer running, and on these big screens here, there's a flashing light that gives you the amount of time you have left. When you start, it's green, it's like a traffic signal. When it's green, you go. When it's yellow, you're getting close to the end, and when it's red, you've reached the end of your speaking time, and it will flash at you. So just keep that in mind. And I think it'd be a good idea to think about what you want to say now, and I also want to mention that we want to give everyone a chance to speak, that we possibly can, so please respect the time limits, and please be quiet and courteous to other speakers, so that everyone who wants to will have an opportunity to speak. So, Mr. County Executive, did you have any additional comments you wanted to make?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Our first speaker, then, will be our County Council, Robin Dravon.
Would it be more?
Sure, that'd be a good idea.
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the item into the record?
Okay.
Item 41 is "Workshop to Discuss the Board of Supervisors' Authority Regarding the Inspector General's Access to Sheriff's Department Facilities and Records: Best Practices in Law Enforcement Oversight in Other Counties and Provide Direction and/or Approved Changes to the Scope of Services of the Inspector General's Contract."
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, County Executive, Staff. I'm here to talk about the Board's authority regarding activities with the Sheriff's Department. I wanted to say first that my client is the county of Sacramento. So in responding to the Board of Supervisors' questions regarding authority, the sheriff is also my client. And in -- this is not a division of loyalty. They are -- you and the sheriff are part of the co-equal branches of government that it's my pleasure to represent. And in your assessment of the Board's authority over certain activities regarding the sheriff and the Sheriff Department, it's a question of a very fine nuance between co-equal branches of government. So we've had -- I've had before you a memorandum on the various degrees of authority, the constitutional authorities, the statutory authorities, and it really boiled down to the four questions that I provided in today's materials. What is the authority over the sheriff, subject to his objection? And first and foremost, I would point out that the sheriff, as an elected official, has a duty to receive prisoners, to bring them to the court at the earliest opportunity. And with -- faced with the Inspector General current difficulty, the sheriff has said that he objects based upon the security in his jail, based upon his constitutional powers. So there, as my memorandum points out to you, in co-equal branches of government, the sheriff says his objection is based upon his constitutional authority. If you were to ask me to bring that to a court, the third branch of the three branches of government, for a decision, the sheriff's constitutional power might allow him to say he has an objection to someone being given the key to his jail. The other questions, though, come to board oversight. Hand the Board, in conducting its review of how the fiscal operations of the Sheriff Department are conducted, seek reports, seek observation, seek review of that department. And there, instead of the sheriff having a nuance to leverage, the Board has that leverage. The Board, under its statutory authority of oversight, as granted in the state statutes as well as the charter, gives the Board that paramount authority, that home rule authority. Can the Board, in creating reports or delegating persons to conduct those inspections, demand either through a subpoena or through an investigative power, that oversight of the department? Yes. So that's the summary of my authority that I've given to you. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Robin, I just -- I wanted to maybe get some clarification. Again, you've gone through what was in the written memo, it's been available to the public as well. So in response number one, as relates to the constitutional structure and the authorities vested with the sheriff, and obviously with the Board of Supervisors, and elected district attorney, you cited different sections, but -- so with that short question that says, can the sheriff be made to open the doors over his objection? The answer was no, and you pointed that out. But then in number three, it says, can direct observation, which may be different than opening the doors, of a Sheriff's Department facility, because that's been part of the essence of the discussion here, is about facilities, whether it be our jails or other ones that would be under the authority of the sheriff. Facility or crime scene be achieved by retaining an expert under the Board's authority to supervise official conduct of the sheriff? And the answer is yes. Those relative code sections, I've looked at that. So tell me what the distinction is between the yes in three and the no in number one, as it relates to the jail facilities, if you could, please.
Well, number one, I would answer simply, you're asking, can you make the sheriff unlock the door? No. Can you make the sheriff give someone a key to the jail? No. The sheriff commands the jail. The Board pays for the jail, the Board staffs and has a budget for the jail. In the Board's oversight of the jail, can the Board say, Sheriff, let our delegate, or let us, or let someone that we want to go inspect, go look at what could be a crime scene, or could be a place of fiscal oversight within the Board's power? The answer to that, yes.
So if that places the jail, again, using, not so hypothetically as you just pointed out, in that the Board said, Inspector General, or auditor, or someone under the delegate authority of this Board, either through contract or otherwise, and we say, we want you to go to the jail, to investigate, but the sheriff still has the ability to say no, so we can say yes, and he's -- I mean, that's kind of what's brought us to at least a part of this. So is yes and no both in this response?
Well, I would say, what we're asking is not to be given a key, but to tell the sheriff, we must see this site, which is part of our oversight.
Right.
In which case, that can be affected through a compromise of leadership, by having someone escort that delegatee, or that contractor, or inspector, to that site of a crime, or site of fiscal oversight. And I would cite Los Angeles' Inspector General as the example, where they require direct observation. And that is required under the state statute and the Board's authority.
Okay. And so, coming forward from what this Board, certainly in concert with the sheriff, has been practiced now for almost 12 years, as it relates to the scope of services, it was modified a bit in 2015, but I think the essence of it, and certainly as one member of this Board who was here, when we went through the initial discussions and had consultant services that provided us some community input, plus plenty of community input, not unlike today, about the role of the Inspector General, but particularly as related to, at that time, in custody deaths, and the concerns expressed certainly by members of the Board, but by the broader community, that we set up an arrangement that this contract, that had the cooperation of the sheriff and the, certainly the Chair of the Board, as that rotates, but in essence, the Board of Supervisors. So has anything changed beyond the point that we are now, from that initial time, and you weren't here, obviously, but when we put in place the procedure, that again, one that had cooperation as its basis, but certainly the independency and the transparency, things that people have called for, and we'll hear from about today? So I just want to be clear, did anything change in the law between 2005 and '06, and now, as it relates to that, except for obviously what brings us here today, and as those, you know, that's well-known to most people in this audience, but no?
No.
So the authorities were the same then as they are now, as it relates to the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff. Inspector General was put in place, we've had two people who've occupied that spot over the past 11 years. And if a situation were to occur this very moment, we had IG in place, the sheriff, he or she, whoever occupied that, could say, no, they can't enter the facility. The Board could say, yes, we want somebody to go to the facility, but it'd have to be done under some cooperative arrangement, so basically the keys remain in the hands of the duly-elected sheriff. And in order to get access, the Board could not get access to the jail unless we -- even though it's -- you say, yes, we could, under our authorities, but in essence, we couldn't. Is that correct? Without -- if there was -- if we were like this, using your example, is that right?
What I'm saying is that, in this nuance of co-equal branches of government, if a suspected crime scene is something so important under the Board's oversight, that we need to go to court and litigate that.
Okay, so that's what you're taking into the point, too? But it would potentially have to be litigated?
Yes. Short of -- short of.
Cooperation.
Cooperation.
Okay. All right. Just one -- so I wasn't necessarily saying crime scene, but facility is to, you know, in custody death isn't necessarily a crime scene, but if there were other situations that warranted it. So crime scene is one thing, that could be in or out of an institution, but we're talking -- what I was talking about was facility in particular.
Crime scene, an equipment closet, the site of a complaint.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be redundant here and follow up on Supervisor Natoli a bit, just to be crystal clear on what's, you know, a fairly muddied concept. So we have extremes here that we're talking about, though. You know, you're saying that, you know, does the sheriff have to hand over the keys? Clearly, no. I don't think anybody's asking for that. But as far as access goes, the sheriff does not have the authority -- this is a question. Is it true that the sheriff does not have the authority to completely block somebody without some kind of a basis, which would most likely be a basis based on security and safety? So meaning that if a majority of this Board wanted the OIG to inspect a scene at the jail, that the sheriff may be able to dictate some form of time and manner, but cannot just lock out, meaning that the sheriff could have a deputy accompany, because this is most likely a civilian, and that's appropriate? But that, if a majority of this Board said, we want the OIG to investigate a certain area within the jail, the sheriff can't just say no. Is that true?
I would agree with you. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So, so far, the questions from Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Kennedy have been relative to the jail. We all know that the Inspector General's charge is not just to provide independent review of what might happen in the jail, that is the subject of his or her concern. It also includes officer-involved shooting scenes. So I assume the legal mechanism that would -- that is cited here, that would ultimately permit us to go have our IG go to the jail, would be the same legal mechanism, power of subpoena, for an officer-involved shooting scene? That's a question.
Same mechanism, yes. The Board's authority.
Okay. So, so understanding that, and understanding the time it takes to exercise that, and given the time-sensitive nature of a deputy-involved shooting scene, how would that practically -- how could it practically be implemented? In other words, if it's the will of the sheriff to restrict access of the IG to a deputy-involved shooting scene, and it's then the will of this Board to exercise by its majority to have the IG be at a fresh shooting scene, how does that -- how does that get implemented in a timely fashion, before it's no longer a shooting scene?
Well, I would say, part of this requires, you know, some working out logistics ahead of time. Some of this is after the event, when it's reduced to records and to writings. Public Records Act requests do supply many of the documents that the Inspector General ultimately reviews as part of his process of record and inspection. As to a fleeting crime scene and his ability to be present, those are either memorandum of understanding that can be contractually agreed to. Los Angeles has both an IG ordinance and a separate MOU for the process and procedure for appearing at a crime scene. And ultimately, if this is so urgent that the Board's oversight is deemed critical to health, life, and safety, we would seek, again, judicial oversight and some kind of temporary action. That would be more fleeting, but it certainly could be if necessary.
So if the, you know, if the incident, the officer-involved shooting incident, is, as you say, fleeting, and there is some disagreement from the sheriff's perspective, that the IG should be granted access, at some point, it's no longer a fresh shooting scene, then the IG in that circumstance is relegated to records and accounts by whom?
Those that are pertinent to the investigation. So those would be sheriff records, department records, fiscal records?
But that, okay, that necessarily means that you'd have a built-in reliance on the department, the sheriff's deputies themselves? That's a question.
It could be, yes.
Okay.
And I would point out that in a complicating factor that was part of what the Board, when initially put in place in 2007 and 2015, did contemplate third-party involvements, such as the sheriff's unions and HIPAA and some of those other things, there's a lot of complicated pieces to get that cooperation.
So in the instance of the way LA County does it, there's this added instrument of the MOU. MOU, I assume, is executed by whom? By the sheriff and the Chair of the Board and the CEO?
The sheriff and the Inspector General.
Okay, just between the sheriff and the Inspector General. So in the MOU, is, do you know, in LA County's instance, does it spell out the specifics of the circumstances wherein the IG has kind of blanket access to shooting scenes?
Not blanket access, not a key, but access in that will be apprised, will be accompanied, will be allowed direct observation.
So let me -- just let me ask it a little simpler. If there's an officer-involved shooting scene in LA County, what does the IG do?
Well, the IG is a large staff. The IG is an attorney. The IG has other attorneys that are part of the IG staff. They have in this MOU a protocol, whereas if there's an incident, a critical incident that triggers the OIG's right under this MOU, they will be notified and they will be allowed access to that scene.
Okay, so that's memorialized in the MOU. Is it also somehow referenced in the ordinance that you mentioned?
Just, it says that such a thing will be effectuated.
Okay. So I guess from the very brief Board letter that you composed here, I had initially the same exact question and concern that was expressed initially by Supervisor Natoli, how to reconcile one and three here, in terms of access, no access, keys, and whatnot. But I think it becomes much more challenging, and I'm not sure if it's contained in your memo here, in terms of some option or advice to this Board. What happens, though, when it's a deputy-involved shooting scene, and how do we ensure, how do we codify somewhere, that the IG is not going to be prohibited from going to a fresh active shooting scene? Would you agree? That's not really kind of addressed here?
Well, how to codify can be either in the contract between the county and the Inspector General. It can be an ordinance that has -- puts it in county law, that you have such a thing, and that pursuant to the authority of the Board, 25303, that county officers are required to cooperate.
Okay, so that, so I'm going to make sure I'm hearing you clearly here. So you're telling us that one of the options that this Board has in front of it is the prospect of developing an ordinance where the IG, in the future, would not be prohibited from, given his scope of -- his or her scope of services, would not be prohibited from being at a deputy-involved shooting scene, because of the sheriff's disposition?
Yes, you could go that extra step. Frankly, I think the contract that you have now has that power, it's just not been pushed.
Where does it reside? No, I'm -- where does it reside in what we have? I'm curious to know that.
In the Board's oversight pursuant to the Charter and 25303, the county officers cooperate.
Okay, so if we have it now, what is the repercussion for the sheriff, who already exercised clearly an intent to keep the IG from doing his job at an officer-involved shooting scene? You see what I'm saying?
Well, repercussion for a dispute is, as pointed out, you know, the Board's ability to litigate that or push it further.
Okay, so I want to, again, I want to make sure I'm hearing you clearly. So one of the options in front of us is litigation right now.
To the ultimate extreme, yes.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions for County Council? Thank you. Ferguson?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Britt Ferguson, the County's Chief Fiscal Officer. At the request of your Board, our office was asked to identify other counties in California that had some form of oversight exercised over the sheriff's offices. And to that end, we did survey other counties and identified five counties that have that oversight in one form or another. Those counties are Los Angeles, Santa Clara, Sonoma, Orange, and San Diego. Included in your Board packet is a large spreadsheet that summarizes some of the key components of the different oversight schemes in those jurisdictions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, or if it's your Board's pleasure, I can summarize some of the general findings that we made as we surveyed these counties.
Let's do both. Let's have you summarize, and if we have any questions, we'll ask.
Okay. So as -- thank you. So as I said, there are five counties that we looked at. Of those five counties, Sonoma County is a general law county, and the other four are all charter counties, just like Sacramento is. In four counties, the oversight entity or entities are established by ordinance, and in one county, San Diego, it's established by charter. Two counties, Los Angeles and Santa Clara, have both a citizens' commission and an Inspector General-type position or office. Two counties, Sonoma and Orange, just have an Inspector General-type office, and San Diego -- Diego County just has a citizens' commission, but that commission has an executive director and staff. In all cases, inspector general-type positions and commission members are appointed by the Board of Supervisors, in some cases, upon the recommendation of the county administrator or executive, or in consultation with county council. For those counties that have an inspector general-type position, four are appointed staff, and one involves a contractor selected by RFP. Where citizens' committees are used, members generally cannot be current county employees or peace officers, or in one case, cannot be employees of a prosecutorial agency. For inspector general-type positions where the position is an employee, in three cases, that's Los Angeles, Sonoma, and Orange, the inspector general must be an attorney. Duties vary by jurisdiction, as you can see from this spreadsheet, and again, this is just a summary, but generally, those duties include things like monitoring sheriffs and in some cases, other departments' operations, reviewing policies, conducting audits and investigations, reviewing use-of-force patterns and investigations, receiving and forwarding, and in some cases, investigating citizen complaints. In some cases, the oversight role is limited to certain circumstances. For example, Mr. Vaughn mentioned the situation in Los Angeles County. There, under their code, the inspector general can only investigate specific incidents involving sheriff's personnel if requested by the sheriff, or when the inspector general determines that the sheriff has not adequately investigated an incident, and then the inspector general has to first give the sheriff another opportunity to conduct an investigation before he conducts an investigation, or when the Board of Supervisors makes a formal request to the inspector general for privileged legal advice pertaining to a claim or lawsuit. And again, the inspector general there is a lawyer. Only San Diego County provides its oversight entity, which is called the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board, with subpoena power, and that's by charter. In the three counties where the inspector general-type position is an attorney, the county code provides that the inspector general have attorney-client relationships with the board, or in some cases, with an advisory commission. And here are a few samples of provisions regarding access to documents or information. In Los Angeles County, the county code says the sheriff and other departments must promptly supply information and records requested by the inspector general, but the inspector general cannot compel sheriff's personnel to answer questions. The code says that the civilian oversight commission is bound by an MOU between the inspector general and the sheriff, and Mr. Vaughn spoke about that MOU, which also governs the terms of access that have been negotiated between the inspector general and the sheriff for his investigations. In Santa Clara County, the code says that the inspector general shall have access to information and records, quote, "to the greatest extent permitted by law," end quote. The code also, the code also provides that the sheriff's office and other county departments shall promptly supply information and records requested by the inspector general. In Sonoma County, the code directs the inspector general and the sheriff to create written protocols that specify the process for providing the inspector general with documents. And in Orange County, again, where the inspector general is an attorney, the code says that the inspector general shall have the same access to documents as county council. That's a brief summary, and again, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just very quickly, so which, which county is the one, you said four of them have, or three of them have their offices created within the county structure, and one is by an RFP under contract? Which one is that?
The RFP is, uh, uh, let's see, I believe it is Sonoma County, but I'm going to look here and confirm that. Uh, no, I'm sorry. It is-
Santa Clara is.
It is, it is Santa Clara County.
Santa Clara, I see it.
Yes.
All right. But the other ones then, for Los Angeles, Orange, Sonoma, and San Diego are either offices within the framework or work in hand-to-hand with the citizens.
Yeah, in, in the case of San Diego, they have a, they have a, they have a oversight committee, a commission-
Right.
-and that commission appoints an executive director who provides the, who's an attorney.
Okay. Just one other thing, on this information, I appreciate it. I think it was certainly useful and I think in getting some idea of what's done elsewhere in California. Yeah, and those that sought out this information, have they had any situations in my parallel what's brought us to this point here today?
You know, we didn't do a lot of in-depth discussions with them. I, we did find that there has been, there's been some disarray in a lot of these jurisdictions. For example, I believe it's Orange County, their inspector general-like position has been vacant for two years, and they just finally filled it. Santa, uh, Santa Clara just went through a reorganization that really changed their structure. So, I can't speak specifically to that, but I think there have been issues of, of implementation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Additional questions? Okay, thank you, Brett. Okay, Sheriff Jones?
We're all having problems with these things today. Mine's not working very well either. Phil's spread out.
Okay, I hope we've got that out of our system now, and we can let speakers speak. Mr. Sheriff?
Good afternoon. I first want to start by thanking those members of the board that have worked diligently to try and resolve the situation, to come up with a solution that works. As you know, it was I who came to the board several years ago and asked for the reinstatement of the inspector general position, and I still truly believe that the inspector general, if properly chosen, can enhance greatly the sheriff's department. I specifically want to thank those members of the board that have supported me in the sheriff's office throughout the course of these many hearings. I want to address specifically Sergeant Natoli and Sergeant Kennedy. Although you've brought criticism, on occasion, it has always been accompanied by alternatives and alternative solutions or potential solutions, and for that, I thank you. Supervisor Kennedy, I reviewed the language that you've proposed in preparation for this hearing. The major difference between the language of your proposal versus prior versions is it appears to take the sheriff completely out of consideration as to what the inspector general does, or the direction that he or she goes in their investigations. It also appears to take the sheriff out of consideration as being a party to the agreement, and as such, it's like many other agreements that come before the Board of Supervisors, it's an agreement among supervisors. As such, I really don't have any standing to object to the language, but more importantly, I thought it worthwhile to tell you, I don't have any objection to the language in that version. And if it's the collective will of the board at the end of this to, to impose that language, then I will look forward to continuing to work, continuing the dialogue to work towards effectuating the intent of that language. But regardless of what happens with that language or any language at the hearing, I want to make sure you were aware that I personally appreciate your willingness to stand up as a leader and come up with a potential solution, at least to this hearing. I appreciate that. I also want to thank the vocal minority that showed up, that today is, or the silent majority, rather, that showed up today, which is not silent, that committed to showing up today to express their support of the men and women of the sheriff's department, of the independence of an elected sheriff and the office of sheriff, and the democratic principle that an elected official should be free to do the people's business without undue outside influence. To tell you the truth, I really don't know what the purpose of this hearing is or what its outcomes will be, but I think there's a few points I'd like to make as you contemplate what this hearing's going to be. First, it's been described that I have been endeavoring to strip away the independent oversight authority of the inspector general. First and foremost, the inspector general never was independent oversight, never had the ability, was never intended, and never had the authority. In fact, that position never had autonomous, independent investigative authority. Whoever tells you anything different is simply not being truthful. My efforts over the past some weeks have been to try and modify and adjust and shore up the language of the contract to more closely reflect, reflect what the inspector general's role always has been. But heck, if you want to-
You locked him out.
If you want to go back to the original language of the IG, that's fine. Don't care. But I think we've seen with not the right inspector general, it can be a dangerous lack of being concise in the language. I've been described as rogue, authoritarian, a dictator, a mini-Trump.
Racist.
Oh, yeah, okay. Racist, we'll add that to the list.
Arrogant. Office.
All because I won't voluntarily allow independent oversight of the sheriff's department. This seems strange to me. No other agency in the region, not the Sacramento Police Department, nor other sheriff's department in the state, has oversight in the type that's being advocated for here. So, is that to suggest that all the other law enforcement leaders, all the other sheriffs in the state are rogue, authoritarian, and dictators, potentially racist?
True.
Clearly not. It's just me. And it's just because an irresponsible and unaccountable newspaper keeps saying it over and over and over again. Six times in the last week, as a matter of fact. I've also heard people say, what's the big deal with independent oversight? If you have nothing to hide, why do you care? Why is independent oversight a big deal? Well, it is a big deal. First of all, it's a giant leap backward for democracy when you strip elected officials of their discretion. Can any, can anybody reasonably suggest that the governor, a mayor, a county supervisor should subject themselves to independent influence and oversight?
Yes.
Of course not, because they are accountable to and elected by the people, as I am. It is also a giant leap backward for public safety when the delivery of law enforcement services is politicized.
You'll all get your turn to speak. If you could just remain quiet until then, you'll have your opportunity to say what you think.
Would the Board of Supervisors suggest placing any members of you as the inspector general? Would any of you consider that? Of course not, because you have no ability to decide with, whether what we are doing in the sheriff's department is proper or the actions we are taking are proper. For that very same reason, control of the sheriff's department cannot be vested in or influenced by outside political influence. And speaking of the effectiveness of your sheriff's department, do you know that we've reduced crime within any other agency in the region?
The lies, you too.
Do you know that we're the most technologically advanced, ethnically diverse agency in the region?
We're the worst.
Do you know that we've created more youth and community programs than any other agency?
Where?
Do you know that we give out, give back millions of dollars to the Board of Supervisors to fund your other priorities every year?
Totally, yeah.
Do you know that we, we have an almost 80% satisfaction rating in the communities that we serve?
Excuse me, please, please let him speak. You will have your opportunity when your name is called. Thank you.
By every measurable metric, the sheriff's department and the women and men who work for it deliver the highest quality of public safety to the largest number of folks, all while being the least staffed. So, I can't help but wonder, where are we falling short? By what metric, by what measure are we not achieving?
In custody.
Or maybe it's just me, or maybe it's political, maybe both. So, as I close out my comments, I want to return to where I started and thank those of you on the board who truly care about finding a solution to this, who try, have worked, as I have, over the last several weeks to try and find a solution that makes the sheriff's department better. I can tell you that even though I'm the one who came to the board and asked it to be reinstated, I don't want it to fail. I don't want it to fail because we have not acted in the way we're expected to act or done what we are expected to do, and that is come together and reach an agreement that strikes an appropriate and legal balance between the independence and effectiveness of an inspector general and the independence of a sheriff who is elected by the people to take care of over 2,100 employees and provide public safety to over 1.5 million people in Sacramento County, free from outside influence. I thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. You can be seated.
Madam Chair, before I step down, I'd like, I'd request that you would recognize former Sheriff John McGuinness to provide some context on this position.
Charlie. Welcome, Sheriff McGuinness.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much for allowing me an opportunity to speak. I'd like to offer some historical perspective on how this inspector general position was established. I'd like to give you a little bit of a historical perspective even before that, to share with you, I know all of you, but I'd like to share some of my background and experience and some of the decisions that I made along the way during the course-
Excuse me, Sheriff McGuinness. This is part of Sheriff Jones' presentation. Sheriff McGuinness is here at his request to explain how the inspector general position got started, so I think it's good, I think it's good information.
Law orders not as tied. It's a violation of parliamentary rules.
Well, you'll get your turn, you'll get your turn later. Sheriff McGuinness, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. During the course of my career, while assigned to the-
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay.
Please be quiet.
During the course of my career, while assigned to CSI and the homicide bureau, I had occasion to investigate well over 150 shootings. That includes officer-involved shootings, murders, attempted murders, and along the way, I found myself in a position where I took cases to the district attorney recommending prosecution of peace officers, both within this jurisdiction and outside this jurisdiction. And in fact, in one case where there was a perceived conflict on the part of the district attorney's office, went to the attorney general and worked diligently with the deputy attorney general in the effort to bring justice to a case where I felt it was necessary. I offered that as an illustration of the fact that I do not suffer a tendency to turn a blind eye to law enforcement activity. In fact, on the contrary, I have absolute evidence to the, to the contrary. Now, long come, about a dozen years ago, when we established this inspector general position, and I worked at great length with Supervisor Natoli at the time to interview a number of people to find the right fit for that job, a couple of things were absolutely necessary. First of all, it had to be a person who was intellectually qualified, philosophically and ideologically predisposed to do the best job they could, to be an enhancement to the quality of service delivered by the sheriff's department. It was also necessary, and is still necessary, that there be an agreement on the part of the Deputy Sheriff's Association as to the person to hold that position. As your counsel will no doubt attest, the sheriff does not have the authority to unilaterally compromise or waive the, the privilege entitled to members, public safety officers, to maintain their personnel records, their compelled statements, other things about their activities as confidential. So, it was in that spirit that we actually reached an agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. It was one of mutual trust, to bring this effort forward, to do the best job we could for you and your constituents, and it worked rather effectively. In the, in the intervening years, there's been changes, obviously. That person went on to other things, and a new inspector general was, was chosen. There has been a breakdown of the trust in that position. I have read the report proffered by the inspector general. I've also read the district attorney's report to include the observations and commentary from the expert retained by the district attorney to help make the filing decision on this case. That, the DA's report to include that expert's opinion and the inspector general's report are completely and totally at odds. They're mutually exclusive of one another. You cannot find that each of them or both of them are correct. One is, and frankly, one is not. I would put that independent expert, use-of-force expert, up against anybody in the field. And by the way, today, I make my living as a person who does litigation consulting for these very kinds of cases. So, I've testified, I've testified for plaintiffs, I've testified for defense. I've been retained by law firms representing both. So, it's not as though there's a lack of ability to understand the nuance associated with a given case. The trust in this relationship has eroded. It has broken down- And by the way, today, I make my living as a person who does litigation consulting for these very kinds of cases. So I've testified for plaintiffs, I've testified for defense. I've been retained by law firms representing both. So it's not as though there's a lack of ability to understand the nuance associated with a given case. The trust in this relationship has eroded. It has broken down. This position, in its current form, as it has been with this Inspector General, can no longer exist. It is time to look in another direction. I do believe there is a benefit to be had from having somebody occupy that position. This one is compromised. I also have read the annual report, and I'm looking for some substance in the annual report in terms of things going on in the Sheriff's Department, not just officer-involved shootings, not just in custody deaths, but the totality of what the organization does. Some of the things Sheriff Jones just mentioned, that doesn't appear anywhere in that annual report. Why not? That's an absolutely critical function of the department. The extent to which diversity, which was a stated goal years back, has been achieved in the Sheriff's Department is laudable. That should be recognized. The extent to which crime has been reduced in the Sheriff's Department's jurisdiction, while the trend is going in the opposite direction, the majority of other counties and communities in the state of California is worthy of note. That's not referenced. So I believe you have a situation here that has taken on a life of its own, frankly, through politics and the politicization of this particular position. That should never be the case. Should never be the case. Among the things that were considered, the language that was included when Supervisor Natoli and I first worked on this effort, it did not include oversight. It did not include independent investigation. As the sheriff pointed out, that doesn't exist anywhere in this region, to the best of my knowledge, not anywhere in the state. It does allow an opportunity for information to be gleaned from the Sheriff's Department and to be shared with the communities they serve. I heard a lot of conversation about access to crime scenes. And I will tell you, as a person charged with many years with the investigation of homicides and the integrity of crime scenes, you don't want to open that up to a broad number of people having access to crime scenes. Typically, the supervisors, managers, the sheriff himself, they don't go inside a homicide scene. Because anybody who goes into a scene of that nature, brings something in with them when they arrive, and takes something with them when they leave, unintentionally, but that's the nature of physical evidence. That integrity of that scene has to be absolutely above all else. It will compromise the ability of the district attorney to prosecute a case if that evidence is contaminated. So as you look to options going forward, I strongly encourage you to not be overbroad in terms of how you establish language providing for access to a crime scene. That would be detrimental to justice. It should never happen. Finally, I will thank you for your time, and I strongly... By the way, just to make it abundantly clear, it's no secret that I am a supporter of the sheriff. In full disclosure, in the spirit of full disclosure, I also sat on the interview panel for Rick Brazil when he was appointed Chief of Police. I have also endorsed and contributed to each of your campaigns to get you where you are, with the exception of Supervisor Kennedy, who I've never met until today.
No, you have not.
So it's not as though, in spite of that history, there's not an opportunity for objectivity, candor, and honesty. Again, the need to be honest with what this has been is absolutely critical. I applaud you for your actions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you, Sheriff McGinnis. Any questions for him?
Thank you.
No, thanks, John.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go into public comment now, and I have about 150 speakers so far.
Madam Chair, I'm trying, this thing is just not working today.
I know.
Backing up too, so...
I've mentioned it to the computer people. Our screens are not working out here, Metro Cable. So I wanted to mention, since the majority of the speakers seem to be from the city of Sacramento, that you know the difference between a chief of police and a sheriff. A chief of police is appointed by the city manager and city council and reports to them. He's an employee. A sheriff is elected by the people, and they are his manager. And that is a distinct difference, if you're... Because I understand that.
You're really giving a lesson in democracy?
Well, sometimes. Civility certain. Those aren't working. That's not working. So, we're going to start out with two minutes, and we may...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah, I don't have any choice, because of the technology.
Our computers aren't working up here. Mr. Kennedy.
Sheriff McGinnis still here? Did he leave?
No, he just walked out.
Well, that's great, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
We'll listen anyway.
Maybe he can hear? No?
Probably close enough, getting back.
Okay.
Here he comes, here he comes.
There he goes. Okay, Sheriff. If I could have a question, Sheriff McGinnis? If I could have a question, thank you.
Just like the old days, Sheriff McGinnis.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sorry about that. We were having technical difficulties up here. I have, you know, I need one point of clarification. You are philosophically opposed, or professionally, to your experience, you're opposed to having someone like an IG go to crime scenes?
No.
For the reasons that you said, okay?
No, not at all. But the idea of establishing a blanket statement to say that they will have entree to a crime scene, where you have blood spatter evidence, you have DNA evidence, you have discarded evidence at the scene, you have things that have been left, the signature sometime of a person who has committed a crime. So to be overbroad in terms of that authority... No, by all means, go to this crime scene, have an opportunity to see what you can. It's not uncommon for the sheriff or his staff to go to a crime scene, stand outside the yellow tape, because the integrity of that scene is so important. Eventually, you can get a look and see. All of that is photographed and video-recorded now, so there's an opportunity to review that after the fact. But to go too far with something that would compromise that integrity of that scene, I think is problematic.
Okay, so in the past, and not just in our jurisdictions, but other jurisdictions I've looked at throughout the state that employ some kind of oversight, OIG or whatever, we've always had this position as on-call, you know, to actually come out, to be on the on-call list, to come out to these scenes. You're still supportive of that?
Absolutely. But again, if it gives such a strong level of authority to a person to actually violate the integrity of that scene, it creates a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Just, you know, one other observation on this. We look at the fundamental issue associated with this particular shooting incident, it's mental health. And I can't help but notice that there looks to be about $150 million in unspent money in the county of Sacramento from the state mental health efforts. Perhaps, I know that's a topic for another day.
You and I can debate that all day, but I'm not going to.
But I understand that. But maybe that's an area that should be considered.
Excuse me, please be quiet.
Please.
Anything else? Thank you for answering my question.
That's my pleasure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
So, I'm going to read our first three speakers. If you would get yourself to the aisle, so we can move along. At first is Pat Dilevson on Ironwood, Mac Worthy, and then Amar Sherghil. Is Pat here?
Maybe outside.
Then Mac Worthy? And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce someone's name. These are not always the easiest to read. Mr. Worthy?
Good afternoon, pal. And for my first time, I support Jones 100% from the day he went on the first time. I support him. And for you explaining the difference in appointing and being elected. And 90% of the people here don't understand that. That's why they oppose the matter here. If they come down and understand that, you don't want nobody fanning through your file, unless and they got a right to. And Jones had the authority. Now, if anything over there been in a complaint, I think you should go to court and get a documentation from a judge to go into this man's file. That's an elected position. Now, if somebody want to come and go through your file, Kennedy's office said, "Well, I got a complaint, I want to check the file." No. He had that same authority. If you come in more of that and come with a law, I support law and order 100%. You got a lot of garbage here you're going to hear today, it's not relevant to law and order. You're going to hear that stuff there, you got to close your ear to it. Further study, I will sit down with you in a different type of environment and deal with Jones' issues that this city faced. This city sitting on a time bomb. Oversight, 90% of the people here don't even know what oversight is. They don't know about oversight. I owned the business for 44 years. To come in and check my stuff, you better bring a documentation from the court. And this is the same thing this man's position here. And if you understand that and sit down and say, "Look, we want to teach the people, there's a lot of teaching needs to be done here in the city. A lot of teachings pertaining to how law enforcement operates." Let them know that is a law. You can't stand up in no courthouse and tell the judge to give that man more time. That's illegal. Now, the city let that thing, oversight, come in, which is never will do nothing for the police department in the city. It is garbage. It is garbage. Furthermore, this type of thing here goes back to sanctuary cities, and I'm probably going to be the one to testify on the law of sanctuary city. This is some of the stuff they're trying to dig up. You may go back and look at some stuff here where you fanning through a file, go to the states of Texas and Louisiana where you found some cases been turned over. Did this person go into somebody's file and found something and gave it to an attorney to make $40 million for a person being in jail? I can go to some under Lieutenant Spitzer, right here, to show you something in county jail, 30 days overtime.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Thank you.
What would you be looking for when you go into this man's file?
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Amar Sherghil? Sherghil, Amar? Then Tanya Faison, then Vice Mayor Steve Hansen, and then Oscar Kurnt. Mr. Sherghil?
Let me start by saying quite clearly that Black Lives Matter. Yes! My name's Amar Sherghil, I'm a father of three, an attorney, and appointee of this board on the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee. That is an independent oversight body that looks at the county employees and ensures that the county employees look like the people of Sacramento. Because I believe in that role, independent oversight, I also believe in the role of the Inspector General to provide independent oversight of the Sheriff's Department. Now, we've heard that there may be litigation involved, that may take hundreds of thousands of dollars and many years to resolve. But if the sheriff is exercising what I consider to be a capricious and unreasonable manner, locking out the Inspector General from the Sheriff's Department, then I submit that there is a role for this body to act outside of the box and to work with the Inspector General, to create a list of documents and witnesses that they believe need to be used in oversight in any specific case, and demand that those county employees, those county documents, appear here in front of the supervisory board, so they can be reviewed with the Inspector General. Because if the county cannot go to the Sheriff's Department, if the Inspector General can't go to the Sheriff's Department, then the mountain must come to Mohammed. And those documents must be brought here, and you review them here, until some other agreement is reached. And what I'd say finally is that there was an agreement reached by the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department gave its word to this board that they would follow that agreement regarding the Inspector General. They do not have the moral authority to reject that. Sure, they can stand on an unreasonable, capricious legal grounds, but the moral authority is clear. They made an agreement, they should keep their word until a new agreement is reached with the people that are on the other side of the agreement. That's what we do. We keep our word, and I expect the Sheriff's Department to keep their word. And if they don't, if they do not act like a responsible public servant, then they shouldn't be paid like a responsible public servant. If they can't keep their word, then this board should exercise their supervisory authority and review the salary of the sheriff. Not the department, but the sheriff himself. He gave his word through the Sheriff's Department, his predecessors, he needs to keep that word, or the supervisory board needs to reevaluate his salary. Thank you.
Tanya Faison, Vice Mayor Steve Hansen, Oscar Kurnt, and then Ryan Ruth McDonald.
So, this Sheriff's Department has refused to release requested information to the families that their deputies have killed and abused, and that includes Adrian Lud, Ryan Ellis, Michael McIntyre, Trish Hill, and now Marshall Miles. Deputies have been caught forcing inmates at the Sacramento County Jail to drink toilet water. Deputies have thrown flash grenades in inmate cells. The Sacramento Sheriff's Department has failed to respond to reports of female inmates being raped by deputies. Instead of fighting, Scott Jones settled in a sexual harassment case lodged against him. Scott Jones' Sheriff Department arrests black people three and a half times higher than their white counterparts. The Sacramento Sheriff's Department has costed the county over $17 million in lawsuits for excessive force, rape, torture, and death. Scott Jones has direct ties to the nationally documented white supremacist group called FAIR. Jones and his department were caught illegally listening to over 500 cellphone calls with a stingray and without a warrant or court order. And it's been documented through research that they're surveilling people through social media currently. Jones has a relationship with ICE that has profited, Jones' department has profited off the department's undocumented, or the deportation of undocumented people. The Sheriff's Department has denied family leave to women and disability accommodations to disabled employees. Acting unprofessionally, Jones has sent letters to community leaders attacking their character. Acting unprofessionally, Jones has attacked community and media on social media using dog whistle language to rally his base. Acting unprofessionally, Jones has used news and media outlets to blame the black community for the tragic loss of a deputy, while calling on his base to confront black community and organizations while we push for transparency and accountability. Jones' Sheriff Department has been sued for excessive use of isolation and solitary confinement in the county jail. Jones' Sheriff Department has been sued for inadequate mental, physical, and dental health care of the Sacramento County inmates. The recent suffocation of Marshall Miles by Sacramento deputies while Miles told deputies repeatedly that he could not breathe. They did not get him medical help, but instead deputies piled up on top of his upper body, causing him to die while in custody. Lastly, the Sheriff Department, the very first time that they've ever released a video, they released a video yesterday for Marshall Miles while shared with the media and not with the family. The family was not notified, the face was not blurred, and this is why our sheriff needs oversight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Steve Hansen? Steve Hansen here. Oscar Kurnt, then Ruth McDonald, and Red Baines.
Well, I thank you, board. I'm going to tell you, it's the first time that I've been here to a board meeting. I've had some interactions with Mr. Natoli's office. I want to thank you, you handled those issues very well. I support Scott Jones, I voted for Scott Jones, I voted for our DA. I believe that oversight and any considerations of any problems that the Sheriff's Department may have should be to the DA's office, the State Police, California Department, you know, Highway Patrol. I think that this course of adding another layer of bureaucracy in our law enforcement undermines my vote and the community's vote. We put a man in charge that is highly educated, very articulate, speaks extremely well. And by the way, I don't understand how you stand for this uncivil acts and screaming out. That just is disturbing. That's not democracy, it's rude and it's uncivil. I want to say that I voted for Scott. I know before that, he is a highly intelligent man, very articulate. Sheriff McGinnis, the same thing. I think that he answered and gave his ideas to you very clearly. There was no hem-haw, no gray coloring outside of the lines. He answered the questions correctly, much better than the counsel did for county. I think you undermine the Sheriff's Department, you put second-guessing in all the officers. They know that Scott will stand behind them. I'd like to see any of you face a gun. I'd like to see any of you face life and danger. So when you are at that point, and a sheriff deputy or a police officer makes a decision, it's a split-second decision, knowing that his boss is going to protect him, try to make sure that he did everything correctly, and if he didn't, he'd be held accountable, he'd be dismissed. You guys, we had two deputies, Sacramento City officers shot. They did a felony stop, well-planned, well-coordinated. I asked, I had the opportunity to talk to Sheriff McGinnis, and he told me, I said, "How could that happen? They know this guy was probably armed, they know all this was happening, they had their guns drawn on a felony stop, the guy got out of the car, shot two of our officers, then we returned fire." I asked, "How could that happen?" Because those officers lost confidence that they know that their life's in danger, but they hesitated, they paused, even with all the... Even with all the training they had, they paused and they got shot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kert. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar.
Thank you. Ryan, Ruth McDonald, Red Baines, and then Don Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth McDonald. I'm a retired physician in Supervisor Kennedy's district, and I thank you for your memo, sir. I support a strong outside Inspector General, and I support law enforcement, and I respect this board. Outside independent review makes organizational processes stronger, especially when a critical incident has occurred. This is true in aviation, where expert outside review is performed by the National Transportation Safety Board; in medicine, where formal conferences engage in depth and adverse outcome review, and should be true for law enforcement in Sacramento County as well. These review processes make organizations stronger and further trust in the integrity of these important public entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Don Jones, then Councilman Guerra.
Thank you. My name is Red Baines, and I am in Supervisor Serna's district, and I'm here today to say that I really think that we need a strong and clear checks and balances in this county. I would hate to see our county go to something like what Arizona did with the sheriff that was run amok there. We have to have these balances. This is not anything to say against any officer or the sheriff, but this is what I feel is important to our community, that we have these checks and balances. And I know Rick Brazil, he's a man that's incomparable with what he thinks and what he says. He's worked. He's dedicated his life to this city, and I think that this is the kind of thing that we need action on, and I hope that you all will do that and make sure that we have the checks and balances that are needed in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Jones. Then Eric Guerra, then Christine Bailey, and Michael Cook.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm here to support law enforcement, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, and the sheriff who is standing up for them and us. The DA's report is out, and the real truth has been revealed. Everything was legal and justified. The deputies did what they were supposed to do and prevented innocent citizens from being hurt. The IG report was released over three months ago, and Brazil's incomplete analysis and vague conclusion has been repudiated by the DA's analysis
Excuse me.
and an independent use of force expert. No IG report has ever been released prior to the DA's report. Why was this one released early? No good has come of it, and all it did was sell the bee and create a three-month negative news cycle against the sheriff and the men and women who serve and protect us. But maybe that was the goal all along. This whole mess stinks. Brazil said before that he should not even complete a report until he sees the DA's report. Now he says that he has done it before a few times. Not true. He has told two different versions of why he released the report early. Emails from a board member to Brazil and a letter from the sheriff to the board are leaked to the bee. Why the deception? Why the lies? It sure looks like petty partisan politics and a power play, and it plays into the false narrative against law enforcement, and it has no business in this county. It's bad for those of us who just want to be safe on the streets and in our homes. There are no political parties in county politics. Your job is to support the sheriff and make sure he has everything he needs to make sure we are safe. You and your Inspector General forced the sheriff into an impossible situation. He chose to stand for the citizens of Sacramento County and the men and women who work for him and protect us, and he brought this all to a head. Now it's your job to do the right thing. Get a competent Inspector General. Get an Inspector General who's truly independent. We need an Inspector General who can be respected by both the community and the men and women of the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. There we go. Sorry, I didn't see you coming down. Michael Cook, and then Vicki Stanfill.
Good afternoon.
If you'll just stand between the two microphones and not hold them, that's probably, we get the best sound that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Christine Bailey, and my representative is Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Frost reached out and conducted a Facebook poll the last few days to see what folks thought of this issue, and fifty-seven percent of those responding said that they did not support the sheriff's position on this issue. I'm a member of that, I'm a member--
Excuse me. Please be quiet and let other people speak.
I'm a member of that fifty-seven percent, and I believe that we need a strong and independent Inspector General that has, who has access as needed to be able to do his or her job. The reason I think this is necessary is to build trust among members of our community. We need facts that everyone can trust in order to build trust in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Cook. Then Vicki Stanfill, and then Jessica Porton. Mr. Cook?
Thank you for conducting the meeting today to take care of all this. I'm here today to support Sheriff Jones. For weeks, my family, friends, and I have been disgusted by what we have read, seen, and heard with the biased, unprofessional, and disrespectful rhetoric and contempt directed at Sheriff Jones. These repulsive and undermining actions came from Supervisor Serna, Sacramento Bee, the Sacramento News and Review, the ACLU, and others inside and outside of our county. I ask all of the Board of Supervisors to give your support to Sheriff Jones. It is imperative, if there is to be an Inspector General position, that it can only be principled and not divisive or undermining, as has happened recently. Sheriff Jones and the deputies of Sacramento deserve much better than we have seen and heard these last few weeks. The sheriff and deputies must not be distracted from the selfish and dangerous job they perform for the safer protection of all of us in Sacramento County. We don't need any more self-serving rhetoric. We don't need any more political theater, or political grandstanding, or dramatic soundbites, or Sacramento newspapers biased, contemptuous, and self-serving opinion attacks. We need the Board of Supervisors to support Sheriff Jones and our brave Sacramento County deputies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Vicki Stanfill, then Jessica Porton, and Mary Pat Martell. Ms. Stanfill?
Good afternoon. My name is Vicki Stanfill. I live in the county area of Sacramento that is served by the Sheriff's Department, and I'm here to support Sheriff Jones. I've had the privilege over the last almost ten years of spending quite a bit of time with the officers in patrol, investigations, both jail facilities, and I've personally observed their consistent professionalism. They're doing a tremendous job of protecting the county of Sacramento and partnering with the outlying agencies, and to suggest otherwise is foolishness. They are appreciated and respected by the majority of citizens of Sacramento County, with the exception of a very vocal but very small anti-law enforcement community. Sheriff Jones is doing an incredible job leading the department under current challenging conditions. He has a huge task of dealing with the ongoing budget issues and the constant anti-law enforcement rhetoric in the local media. This negative rhetoric further fuels the flames of animosity for those that do not appreciate or take into consideration what our law enforcement endures and deals with on a daily basis for all of our safety. Additionally, as a former law enforcement officer myself, I would not want anyone without the training and experience to be second-guessing our law enforcement.
Excuse me, Ms. Stanfill. Could you please quiet it down so we can hear the speaker? Thank you.
Law enforcement should not be part of a political agenda. This jeopardizes our officer's safety and the safety of our community. And while the current Inspector General has an extensive background in the field, his defined role was only to observe the department's practices and suggest improvements. This does not mean that the department is without accountability. Again, I've observed firsthand accountability within the office and within the Sheriff's Department enough to know that they do an excellent job in that area. And most certainly, the voters of Sacramento County, along with the DA, the grand jury, and the Department of Justice, if needed, provide additional accountability necessary to hold them to a higher standard. It would be wonderful if the voters of Sacramento County that elected Sheriff Jones could do so and support him without the constant negativity and criticism in the media towards those that are here to serve and protect and keep us all safe. Thank you.
Ms. Stanfill. Jessica Porton, and Mary Pat Martell. So Jessica is first. Oh, sorry. Then Phyllis Sylvia.
Hello. My name is Jessica Porton. I am a homeowner in North Highlands, where I live with my husband and our two small children. I personally have had nothing but positive interactions with police officers in my lifetime. My grandfather was an officer of the California Highway Patrol. Since purchasing my home in North Highlands, I've been a victim of crime no less than three times, and it is with this lived experience and personal family ties to law enforcement that I stand before you and assert that policing and incarceration are the most ineffective and least cost-efficient way to address social problems like crime, substance abuse, homelessness, and I, I, sorry.
Take a deep breath.
We, I'm not the only one that holds these opinions. The American Public Health Association has recently released a statement that declares law enforcement violence as a public health issue. They have called upon local, state, and national agencies to begin systematically divesting from the systems of policing and incarceration and move those funds to what science tells us are more effective methods of addressing societal problems. That is early intervention and prevention. That is early childhood education. That is community development and reinvestment into the most vulnerable populations, the same vulnerable populations that are disproportionately affected by violence from police officers. I recently gave a presentation to the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Services Advisory Group. Kennedy and Natoli were both there. I'm not sure if you remember me. There was an officer of the Sheriff's Department there, and she also gave a presentation. She spoke for about ten minutes about what the Sheriff's Department is doing to address mental health. She spoke for about ten minutes about the hours that the officers receive in training, and while it seemed really beautiful on the surface, I think it exemplifies how out of touch with reality the Sheriff's Department is. How many hours of training officers receive is not a quality metric. The diversity of a police department is not a quality metric. Reductions in excessive use of force, reductions in recidivism rates, reductions in officer-involved shootings, and in-custody deaths, those are quality metrics that we need to be measuring. And when the Sheriff's Department is responsible for defining and measuring whether transgressions like those have taken place, there is a clear conflict of interest. So, if you cannot--
Thank you, Ms. Porton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Pat Martell, then Phyllis Sylvia, and then Bernard Marx. Ms. Martell?
Yes, I'm here to speak to the issue that is actually currently at hand. I am here to ask the board to please support the sheriff. The sheriff and his deputies cannot be subjected to the political whims and ambitions of politicians and anti-law enforcement groups to further their personal agenda. Who provides oversight of the Board of Supervisors? The people at election time, just like they do for the duly-elected sheriff. I don't want any elected sheriff or his officers who are supposed to be protecting me, my family, and the whole community constantly looking over their shoulder and hesitating in their duty, wondering about the next unwarranted attack. These anti-law enforcement narratives are false and ridiculous on their face. Officers do not go through their shift looking for the opportunity to cunt, to hurt or kill for no reason. Law enforcement is often a last resort call in an unresolvable situation, yet they answer those calls. Sometimes these calls end very tragically, but that doesn't mean the officers actually did anything wrong. I don't want to be hurt or killed because officers hesitate to do what is necessary and what they are trained for because of an out-of-control political agenda, or quite frankly, because of bullying from groups masquerading as community service organizations. I am asking the board--
Excuse me. Please be quiet. Go ahead, Ms. Martell.
I am asking the board to resist this intimidation, have courage, and let the sheriff and his officers do their job, follow a reasonable IG model, and get politics out of county government. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Sylvia. And then Bernard Marx, and then Helen Johnson. So, Ms. Sylvia?
Can you repeat the last name to the last group? I think I might have heard my name.
Phyllis Sylvia, Bernard Marx, and Helen Johnson.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Sylvia. I'm here to support Sheriff Scott Jones. When I registered to vote in 1972, I did it because I believed in a democracy, and I believed that my vote counted. I voted for Scott Jones as sheriff because I believed in the job he could do, and he is doing the job that I voted for him to do. Now you're telling us that our vote doesn't count, so then we are no longer a democracy. I think it's time that we step back and quit micromanaging law enforcement and let them do the job they were hired to do. When we start saying that an elected official that your constituents voted for can't do his job that somebody else has to oversee him, then I believe that maybe all of you need to be overseen too, because then we're no longer a democracy when you don't allow us to do that. And I want to say one more thing. My brother gave his life to the county of Sacramento. He was shot and killed in the line of duty. So, it's not just other people that are being killed. Law enforcement, every day they step out there is putting their life on the line, and nobody recognizes that. And I have one other thing to say, and that's thank you, Scott Jones, for doing your job and doing what we've elected you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernard Marx, then Helen Johnson, and Independence Taylor. Mr. Marx?
Members of the board, my name is Bernard Marx. I reside here since 1954 in this county, in the district of Mr. Natoli. The reason I'm here is because I'm a disabled veteran. I served in the United States Army. I served in Europe. I served in Korea.
Wow.
But what I saw as a soldier, I equate it to police. Because you hand somebody a gun, that does not give him the authority to shoot. Especially when somebody is running away. If I were the one having a gun, and somebody hits me on the head with a stone, and I retaliate by chasing him with my gun, and I shoot him, I would be on trial for murder. Where is the compromise? Where is this wherein a person who was re-elected as sheriff objects to have checks and balance? This is what we're talking about. We're talking about transparency. We're talking about checks and balance. The sheriff himself, if he gets a ticket, to give you a comparison, he lights his own ticket, and then he's going to be his own policeman, and then he's going to take and tear up the ticket. That's what he's doing. This is the kind of sheriff you want? I don't think so. I think what we need is an independent individual who in this county can go ahead and prevail because the law says you, our elected officials, are in the same boat. You also have the accountability to us who elected you, and I hope you have an independent counsel. Thank you for kindness.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Helen Johnson here. Okay, Helen Johnson, then Independence Taylor, then Betty Williams, and Aliyan Murphy Hassan. Ms. Johnson?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. I am here to show-- to show my support for Sheriff Scott Jones. And I emphasize "my sheriff" because I voted for him. He is doing exactly what I voted him to do. He is representing us, the community, who want law and order. There is oversight. There is transparency. And you talk about transparency, then why wasn't there transparency from Mr. Brazil when he went out of lanes and did what he did with his own personal agenda? He is one of the few who isn't cowed down by the special interest groups, who have no business or training in law enforcement, and who try to force their anti-police agenda. I want a sheriff who is not a puppet for the few, which is Scott, Scott Jones. He is the people's sheriff, regardless of what others may say. He stands up for what is right and for his department and his deputies. I dare each and every one of you to stand in the day and of life of a deputy or any law enforcement officer. I do. I try, try to be disrespected, cursed, spit on, and challenged every day, and say, "You must be a stone and have no reaction, but yet protect us." Just remember that. Blue lives also matter. I support my brothers and sisters in blue, and I want my sheriff to continue taking care of his department and his deputies, and as he sees fit. Again, remember what the county council said. You guys are co-equal branches of power. Don't overexceed your lane. He needs to do what he needs to do, just like what you need to do. You guys work for us also. As a citizen of this county, I support Sheriff Scott Jones.
Thank you for coming in from Foothill Farms. Independence Taylor? Independence Taylor? Then Betty Williams, and then Aliyan Murphy Hassan.
Aliyan Murphy Hassan. Betty is ill. She's probably on her way, but she's, she's coming, and she's-
Is it Ms. Murphy Hassan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm here on behalf of the NACP, Greater Sacramento NACP. I am the first VP, and I'm representing over 1,200 members. NACP supports law enforcement. We support law enforcement that is transparent, that is accountable, and that brings trust to the community. We support law enforcement that when the community speaks, doesn't leave the chambers because he doesn't want to hear what we had to say. It's interesting to me that at the last board meeting, Scott Jones indicated that he could work with Brazil, that he had trust for Brazil. Now, all of a sudden, there's no trust there. Where's that coming from? Is that coming from insecurity on his part? It's definitely not showing the community that he has the best interests of the community at heart, especially when he couldn't stay here to even hear what we had to say. Throw a rock, death sentence. Run away, get shot in the back. Go into the county jail, don't come out alive. Sure, they released videotape. Thirty-six minutes of videotape. There was some, some elapsed time. If we had an oversight-independent person, maybe we wouldn't, maybe we'd have seen all of the video and not portions of the video. Board of Supervisors, do the right thing. I think I said this last time. Support the community. Support fairness. Support people coming home alive. Yeah. It hurts me to have to stand here to say, plead for people's lives. And that's what we're doing today, pleading for people's lives. Yes, we need law enforcement, but we need law enforcement that is fair. We need law enforcement that is accountable. We need law enforcement that is trusted in the community. Kids see policemen now, and they run away. Not to, away. How is that way to live in a community? That is no way to live in a community. I'm asking you again to do the right thing, support the IG position. Brazil has proven that he has done a wonderful job because he took the politics out of it. He reported what he saw. With his experience and background, you can't erase that. You shouldn't erase that. It should be your guide to what's fair, not at the whim of a sheriff who sticks his finger in his mouth and say, "I'm taking my ball and going home." We cannot tolerate that any longer. We really cannot.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy Hassan.
Thank you.
Independence Taylor? Independence Taylor, Betty Williams, then Carly Brannon. Independence Taylor, I've called several times. That person must have left. Betty Williams? Betty Williams here? Okay, Carly Brannon. Then Christian Rack?
I hear a lot of people coming up here-
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself? I'm-
I'm Carly Brannon.
Carly Brannon. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'd like my five seconds back, please.
I'll give you an extra eight seconds.
All right. I, I've heard a lot of people come up here and say that they're here today to support Scott Jones. I am here today to support the safety and the lives of my fellow community members. A lot of people talk about how Brazil was out of line. His job was to go in and review what happened and make suggestions, and that is exactly what he did. And that is exactly why Scott over here threw a tantrum and locked him out. I've heard a lot of people talk about removing politics from this. This isn't politics. These are real human lives that are being lost. And our black community, our brown community, our mentally ill community, our unhoused community are at much more risk than any officer in this county, be they sheriff, CHP, SAC PD, whomever. Cops are actually safer than they've ever been. So you need to stop with your incorrect rhetoric, folks. There, there's a lot of disingenuous things happening, like the Sheriff's Department yesterday released the video of sheriff's deputies suffocating Marshall Miles and then refusing to get him medical help. I don't know who thought that was a good PR move, but that was wrong. Not only did it show them killing him and then not getting him the medical attention that he needed, they also didn't tell the family that they would be releasing this. They didn't show the family first. It went right out into the media, right out into the public, traumatizing them, traumatizing the public. They had to find out from a friend. It's highly inappropriate. As Toni mentioned earlier, the city has paid out, or the county, rather, so our taxpayer dollars, everybody in here who pays taxes, has paid into settlements for things that Scott Jones and his department has done while he's been in power. So everybody who's here in support of Scott Jones is in support of refusing to release requested information to the families of people who were killed by SAC sheriff, including Adrian Lud, Ryan Ellis, Michael McIntyre, and Patricia Hill, who was not killed but who had facial bones broken by his deputies. All of you here in support of Scott Jones are in support of female inmates being raped and those rapes going unlooked at. Everybody in here supporting Scott Jones supports sexual harassment. There's just so many things. There's lawsuits for throwing flash, flash grenades into cells and making cell, or making prisoners bathe in and drink toilet water. That's just disgusting. There, there needs to be independent oversight. I think that the inspector general is not the answer, but I am in support of the changes to make it a stronger position because we need something in the interim before we get real, true, independent oversight of the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. Christian? Then Eli Roth, and then Mindy Russell.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Sheriff McGinnis made a comment about a lack of trust with the inspector general, and he's right about one thing. This is absolutely about trust, about the trust that the entire community can put in law enforcement, trust that currently is lacking. Real independent oversight builds trust. I'd be perplexed why any supervisor would be inclined to vote to erode transparency and accountability. I've been a voter in Sacramento County since 2006. I've never once voted for Scott Jones. I won't vote for anyone who's not going to subject themselves to reasonable oversight that is going to allow them to build trust with the community that they serve. So I urge you not to water down the duties and the access to the inspector general today. Thank you.
Eli Roth?
Hi, I'm Eli Roth. As a voter in Sacramento County, I agree with Scott Jones that it is to us, the voters, that he is ultimately accountable for. I, however, cannot cast an educated vote without information regarding what he and his department are doing and how they are doing it. Scott Jones agreed to the existing oversight contract and ran for reelection with it in place. If he had legitimate concerns about how the contract was being implemented, he should have brought those concerns to this board through a public process. Instead, he chose to unilaterally cut off our, the voters' information source without public process. His actions on this issue, this issue have been disrespectful to the voters, to the contracting process, to the inspector general, and to this board. Oversight does not equal politicization, or control, or micromanagement. It is simply a way for we, the voters, who, as the chair so kindly put it, are his managers, to gather information and cast educated votes in our ultimate oversight process of voting him for reelection or voting in someone to replace him. We can both support law enforcement and want oversight. And I, as a voter, want oversight. I don't want to see the process that's been taking place. A lot of it has been very petty and beneath the Scott Jones that I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Mindy Russell? Robert Copeland, and Raymond Lee after that.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I am a law enforcement chaplain. I have been serving for 25 years for 15 different law enforcement agencies, one being the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. And I'm here to say that as we serve alongside of law enforcement to victims, I have seen the expertise, the professionalism, and all that is required for law enforcement to help and assist the victims. These victims are from crimes that have had, been given to them or done to them. These are also victims of suicide and Sid's death and all the things that you may read about but a lot of times don't read about. So as a chaplain, I'm able to be a little bit more neutral in what I'm saying because of the fact that we see it on both sides. And what I'm here to say to you is I do believe that the voter is the, the number one accountable to what our Sheriff's Department is held to. The voter, we elect these men and women into these professions such as yours and our sheriff. So we are the ones that will hold them accountable more than anything. And the challenge and the checks and balances that they have, no matter what kind of investigation goes on internally with our law enforcement agencies, it goes over to the district attorney, and then it can go to the attorney general. So there's a lot of transparency in all of the area of how they do these investigations. So I'm just here to say, I support you, Scott Jones. I support law enforcement. I support this community, and I support-
Mindy? Mindy, if you'd address the board, please.
I do support this community, but it's unfortunate that the ones that come up and speak these falsehoods and are thinking that they're being heard is unfair to the, the general population that does support law enforcement. So thank you very much. And like our great philosopher, Jack Nicholson, said once before, "You can't handle the truth."
You, Mr. Copeland?
I'm not sure I can exactly follow that up. You know, really.
Please be quiet.
My name is Raymond Lee. My name is Raymond Lee. I think the-
We can't hear any of what you're saying. Please be quiet. Please give this speaker a chance to has, say what's on his mind. Thank you. Are you Robert Copeland?
My name is Raymond Lee.
Oh, he is. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Copeland was next. Are you Mr. Lee?
Yeah, he's Mr. Lee.
I'm Lee. I'm Lee.
You're Lee. So Mr. Copeland is before you. Good, please. Thank you.
Well, I don't support Sheriff Jones, or I should say Sheriff Arpaio Cologne. How many people have died in your county jails? How many people have died by the police or been raped or been ran into by a sheriff's car, like my friend Wanda Cleveland? We need transparency, and we're not getting it from our sheriff. I mean, really? Scott Jones, clean up your own department. We need an independent oversight committee to, to make sure they told the line and follow the law. And did he do proper procedure? One of you locked out RIG? I don't think he did. I mean, we need a real sheriff that will follow the law. And my dad was a county sheriff of Missouri. Most people don't know that. And I wouldn't support my dad if he did half the things that Scott Jones did. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Lee? And then after him, Maureen Daly Pasco and Jim Eichner after that. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you for the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to speak. As you well know, Sacramento is one of the most multicultural cities in the, in the nation. Scott is the wrong sheriff for our diverse community. His actions have shown him to be divisive, arrogant, and not in touch with the pluralistic community that Sacramento is. He is the wrong sheriff at the wrong time in these turbulent times, not only in Sacramento but in the nation itself. We are sending a message when we send this kind of sheriff, or when this sheriff represents our county. He brings in the head of ICE. That's a direct signal to a very large proportion of our community. Now, anyone that does that kind of politicization should not talk anything about what's fair and what's right. His request to have his people here is a provocative move. He asked that all of these people come over here. Why do you think we say anything? Because he invited, because he's the one to provoke, to invite these people here. He didn't want here to be a civil conversation. He says, "Come over here and show the Board of Supervisors how much strength I have. That's what you want to do. We're here to defend you. We're here to defend you, that we will support you as long as you support the people of Sacramento." Thank you very much.
Maureen Daly Pasco. And then after that is Jim Eichner and James Jackson Jr. after that.
Hi, my name is Maureen Pasco. I don't have-
I don't have any particular expertise in law enforcement, but I have worked over 25 years in local government. I've had the pleasure of working with many of you in that capacity. And I want to say that the sheriff's insistence that the only oversight of him is through the ballot, that the voters put him in office and he's accountable to them only through the ballot, is contrary to many of the oversight management and regulatory functions of government. It's, the more he insists that he's not in need of any independent oversight, the more I'm convinced that he is. To exclude it is contrary, as I said, to many of the functions of government. It's like restricting the FBI from investigating Watergate. It's like excluding the Department of Justice from the LA County Jail and investigating the abuses of inmates there, as convicted felon and former LA County Sheriff Lee Baca It's because of, you know, I'm not asserting that there are similarly egregious situations, but I think that that's exactly why we need to have oversight. I do have one comment about the language that Supervisor Kennedy has proposed, if you do get around to discussing it. I understand the carve-out for excluding personnel matters, but I hope that you clarify that training of personnel is specifically included in the scope of work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Eichner? Then James Jackson Jr., then Trina Allen.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, supervisors, and my friends. I am Jim Eichner from Carmichael, a member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church, speaking for myself. This is the fourth time I've spoken to you about the inspector general, and you see I have the many privileges of having been born white. Our community clearly places a high value on real independent oversight at the sheriff's department. Speakers today have been articulate or just venting anger, but on both sides of the issues, I've been hearing a consensus in favor of oversight. You discussed oversight models in five other counties. Building those, I'm sure, was as contentious as our process here. All of them respond to a broad public desire for independent oversight of questionable law enforcement actions. Our controversy has been between this board and this sheriff. In time, we will have new supervisors and a new sheriff. The need for independent oversight will persist, so you should establish a model that also will persist. The sheriff has a statutory duty to preserve peace by, among other things, building respect for the law. Sheriff's officers build that respect when they also follow the law. If I see officers routinely driving 15 miles an hour above the speed limit, I might think that speed limits are only suggestions. The I.G. is our public radar gun, telling us which few officers are over the limit. Most aren't, and the radar gun will do them no harm. I commend all of you for your efforts to sustain the I.G., which will help the department produce its best work and help the public know it. With the sheriff's cooperation, Sacramento County can have transparency and peacemaking and wise use of public funds. Thank you.
James Jackson Jr., then Trina Allen, and then Allegra Taylor. Mr. Jackson?
I'm totally fine with that anger going on as I speak because I think that they are speaking some truths of power. My name is James J. Jackson Jr., and I have to say, I do not know if it is powerful, heartbreaking, or ironic that we are talking about police oversight and sheriff's oversight on the anniversary of Fred Hampton's death. Perhaps, perhaps if there had been someone holding Chicago Police and the FBI accountable, he would still be alive and the Black Panthers would still be a force providing more social services than this county has ever provided its most marginalized residents. Ms. Peters, I am not surprised by your blatant disregard for democracy today because you treat people who are your opposition as if they are less than you. You did it to me, you did it to my 90-year-old grandma when she said she supports oversight of the sheriff, and you did it today to the people who said that Black Lives Matter. The majority wants oversight, Mr. Jones. Let me say that oversight is just one step. As a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, I will say here publicly, we are not only in favor of oversight but in favor of abolition of the slavery of prisons as well as the sheriff and police. Because they are the ones who the state calls on to oppress the masses, most of whom have been the poor, people of color, and women. Rest in power, Fred Hampton, and all those dead under the watch of Sheriff Jones. Thank you.
Trina Allen? Then Allegra Taylor and then Lynn Berkeley-Baskin. Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Thank you, board of supervisors. I'm Allegra Taylor. And Patrick Kennedy is my representative.
Okay. Thank you.
I am here to stand in solidarity with WAPA. I'm a Sacramento Act advocate, and I am here asking you to vote for oversight and transparency for our sheriffs. Now, many people have spoken about my sheriff, the sheriff that they voted for. The sheriff is a Sacramento sheriff. He is not my sheriff. He is the sheriff of all of Sacramento. So that would also make him my sheriff, whether I voted for him or not. The authority that's been given to Sheriff Jones is delegated authority by his election. His delegated authority does not come unchecked. When you allow someone who had been put in an authoritative position to go unchecked, you wind up with a meeting like this. It is important that this board of supervisors take into the consideration all of Sacramento. I heard all lives matter. All lives don't matter to black people until black people's lives matter. Until black lives matter, all lives don't matter to all people. You guys make these comments, you divide. We are one Sacramento. So I have a question that I want to pose to Sheriff Jones and all of those that voted for him and even this board of supervisors. If the statistics that exist today for black people, if those statistics was of white kids being criminalized, of white people being killed, of white people dying in the jails, would you hear us then? Would they want oversight then? We are not ignorant to what is really going on here. We, as black people, understand how we are viewed. We understand that you criminalize us. We understand all of that. I'm not against the sheriff's department, and neither am I against the police. I have worked youth ministry and we have Sacramento police that grew up with me. I have family members that are in the police department. Listen, this is about accountability. This is about transparency. This is about not allowing one person to have rule over everything going unchecked. Obviously, there's a problem. There's obvious a problem when the statistics are what they are. Black people in the city of Sacramento, from our students on the campuses of elementary schools to every level of education, to the streets of the city of Sacramento, black people are under attack. It is a state of an emergency, and this is why we come together in solidarity, all of the different organizations, all of the different constituents. This is why we are here, because we want, we demand accountability. No elected official should go unchecked. No elected official should take authority that they've been given and use that authority in an ill-mannered way. They should not be allowed to do it. I believe, I think I read something, that Sheriff Jones and the I.G. were friends at one point. What happened? What happened to that relationship? Did it only change after the I.G. voted something that Sheriff Jones didn't approve of? I'm not sure about that. However, I am sure of one thing. Sheriff Jones is accountable to all of Sacramento, not just the privileged who voted for him, not just those who feel that he is only their sheriff. Because Sheriff Jones and the political climate that we're in today, we understand what's going on, but this dividing factor, it can't stand here in Sacramento. We are one Sacramento. And even though there is division among us today, many of us here stand in solidarity for the board of supervisors to do something. We are hoping that you use your authority to the best of your ability, and we are hoping that you hold Sheriff Jones accountable to his constituents and not just those who voted for him, but he's the sheriff for all of Sacramento. So that would include me.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Is Trina Allen here? Lynn Berkeley-Baskin? No.
Sacramento deserves better...
I'm sorry. Could you tell me your name?
I'm Trina Allen.
You're Trina Allen. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sacramento deserves better than a megalomaniac in the sheriff's department with unilateral control over our lives. This tantrum isn't about justice, safety, or protocol. It is about power and one man's authoritarian ability to abuse it. Local law enforcement departments and individual officers, especially those elected to office, are public servants and therefore should be held accountable to the people they serve. It speaks volumes that the majority of Sacramentoans of color in this audience do not support Scott Jones. Sheriff Jones has broken community trust repeatedly. He has deliberately avoided transparency in policing, cost taxpayers millions of lawsuits, allowed his officers to disproportionately target and terrorize black and brown community members without censure, participated in sexual harassment and egregious violations of human rights. Of even greater concern are the unfathomable amount of black people dying at the hands of the sheriff's department. BLM Sacramento has advocated on behalf of the family members for the past three years, and not once has the sheriff's department displayed any cooperation, respect, or even base compassion for remaining loved ones. No evidence, no video, no questions answered at all. Jones is a disgrace to this county and to the justice everywhere. More than anyone, Jones and his department require independent oversight. We can argue about what that should look like, community-led subpoena power, disciplinary power, county-funded, et cetera, but as it stands, Rick Brazil is a 30-year law enforcement veteran and a former chief of police. We are here today because even Brazil agreed with the community that lethal force was not necessary against Michael McIntyre. I am less interested in how you go about it and more interested in your direct and effective action today. The refusal of oversight is dangerous, embarrassing, and detracts from the humane focus of what this argument should be about, the fact that a man died unnecessarily in your county. What are you, each of you, going to do about it and how do you plan to prevent the next body from piling up at your feet? Put him in check. He deserves it.
Lynn Berkeley-Baskin, then Rhonda Rios-Crawitz, and then Jason Weiner. Is Lynn here? Okay. Dr. Crawitz?
Thank you, Chair Peters and the board members for the stability to speak. My name is Rhonda Rios-Crawitz, and I'm speaking on behalf of StepUp. In speaking to the lack of transparency and accountability by the sheriff's department as well as lack of oversight of this sheriff, my testimony will detail one concrete example using StepUp's Public Records Act requests for information from the sheriff's office. We had received complaints from the community members that the sheriff's department practices disproportionately affected the Latino immigrant community. In the P.R.A., we requested information on traffic stops, checkpoints, vehicle impalements, assessment forfeitures, and collaborations with ICE for the last three years. Within five days, we received a response acknowledging receipt of the P.R.A. Seventy days later, we sent a follow-up letter requesting an anticipated date for a response to our request. On that same day, Tanya Birch apologized for the delay and requested that we narrow the scope of the request as it was unduly burdensome. She gave no reasons as to why it was burdensome. StepUp submitted a revised request that was significantly reduced. The sheriff's department asked for more clarification, and we provided that clarification. Eighty-nine days after our initial request, we received a response indicating no responsive documentation exists. We interpreted the message for information as "access denied." Transparency and communication are key. We took our response to the O.I.G. on June 19, 2018, but even though he felt that information could have been provided, he had no recourse to make that happen. In the interest of accountability, integrity, and transparency, StepUp strongly feels that the sheriff's department should not be allowed to cite burden in order to avoid complying with data requests. In addition, the O.I.G. should have the power to investigate why this information was not provided. Public access to information allows citizens to understand what the government, or in this case, the sheriff's department, is doing in our name. StepUp only encountered bureaucratic roadblocks. Transparency in police policies, practices, and outcomes allows both the department and the community to identify problematic incidents before they become patterns and to uncover and address discriminatory patterns proactively. Having independent agencies such as an independent civilian review board investigate incidents of possible police misconduct enhances the truth-seeking process. Independent investigations would more likely be free of the institutional alliances and biases that currently color its investigations because they would not feel an impulse to protect fellow members of their own organization. These independent agencies serve as an important function in bolstering public trust in our institutions of justice. Several people will follow my testimony with the exact request and responses we receive from the sheriff's department. Systemic reforms are necessary for the public to regain trust in the oversight of this sheriff. The time to act is now. Put in place an independent civilian review board with audit and subpoena powers and an adequate budget. This process will give the Sacramento County residents an ability to be heard and a promise of due diligence, a process of accountability, integrity, and transparency.
Thank you. Jason Weiner? Shereen Miles? And then Alan Ash?
Greetings. Hi. I'm Jason Weiner.
Mr. Weiner?
I'm a member of the Jewish Community Relations Council, of the Latino-Jewish Forum, and Sacramento Act, and I'm here to speak in support of maximum possible oversight of the sheriff's department and this sheriff. Last month, I joined many others in urging you not to allow the powers of the O.I.G. to be watered down. Thank you for responding to our community's demand for accountability and oversight of the sheriff by presenting new contract language. I'll repeat a couple of points I made then. First, you as a board have the duty and responsibility to oversee all county departments and staff. The sheriff's department should be no exception. The Director of Finance told you today that counties across California have put in place strong, independent inspectors general and citizen review boards to support that oversight role and offer accountability to the public. The county attorney revealed today that you do have the ability to enforce your right to ensure the I.G. can have access to the locations and files that he or she needs to do his or her job if you're willing to go to court to defend that right on our behalf. Second, that this sheriff has over and over again flagrantly disregarded and disrespected his responsibility to transparency with our community and, yes, our county voters. He has blocked access so that we can find out what's happening in the jails. He has left families in the dark about how and why their loved ones died in custody. He has, until forced to yesterday, refused to release any video of deaths and other critical incidents. He's responded to legal public records requests, like the one just detailed to you by Rhonda, by pretending that his department keeps no records of federal ICE visits to the jails he oversees. But this isn't just about this one sheriff, no matter how reckless he's been. It's about changing the system that allows that recklessness. I again thank the supervisors for bringing back stronger contract language for the I.G. position. I urge you to approve that language and then go further to fulfill your duty to us to oversee this department through litigation if necessary. Thank you.
Shereen Miles?
Thank you very much. My name is Shereen Miles. I'm a Sacramento Act leader. I'm also an active member of Sacramento's Immigration Coalition, which includes about 50 different organizations. I am a constituent of Sacramento County and in Susan Peters' area. I live in the... I live in the Maddox Park area. Ms. Peters? I wanted to address one thing before I go ahead to the individuals who are here to support the sheriff. This is not about pro or anti-law enforcement. This is simply about asking for accountability, and there is something not at all, there is something that is not a conflict between asking your law enforcement or any government agency to be accountable and our support for having good law enforcement support. That, of course, we want. What I want to go back to is that Ms. Rios earlier talked about the Public Records Act request that was placed by advocates for immigration with the sheriff's department in July. And I want to just read you what the sheriff's department responded to one particular portion of it. We had requested, we had five portions of our request. We were asked to narrow it down to five areas. And so one area was information about the presence of ICE officials in the jails or other holding facilities, including formal and informal agreements made between the department's officers and ICE officials to interview individuals in the department's custody. And as we all know, our county had a contract with ICE until quite recently. So there is in existence a relationship between ICE and the sheriff's department. What we were told, our response was four words, "No responsive documentation exists." How could that even be? How could that even be? We as citizens and as constituents of each of you are only asking that we have in place a mechanism to provide transparency and oversight for this agency, this government official. We urge the Board of Supervisors to remember that everyone, everyone needs oversight. I, as a teacher, need oversight. We all do. And there is nothing that should interfere. The fact that there's defensiveness on the part of the sheriff's department about getting oversight from outside tells us all we need to know. Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a break right now. We've got a problem with our computers here, and they need to reboot the system, so I really apologize. I think about 15 minutes, so we'll aim to start at 4:25. So take a break, get up and stretch your legs, and we'll be right back.